Sorry, I'm going to have to get used to this here. I call to order the closed session meeting of the mayor and city council at 3:01 PM. Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon, rather. Welcome and thank you for being here and thank you for everybody viewing remotely, on your phones, online, on your TV, however you're viewing. Thank you for joining us. Madam City Clerk, if you could please take the role.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra is not present at the moment. Mayor Protem?
Here.
Councilmember Sharet?
Here.
Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
And Councilmember Ortiz is not present at the moment, and Mayor Tran will be appearing via Zoom in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments at this time?
We have two. Kim Calvin Christian Shaughnessy.
Please proceed. I'm sorry, I'm getting used to this.
There's a pregnant pause there, it's all good. All right, good afternoon, members of the council. Our mayor Protem, my name is Christian Shaughnessy. I've come here today to speak on item three on our closed session agenda. The issues with Arti Ico did not inspire a great deal of business confidence within our city. There are a great deal of many developers who saw what happened there, who now see the current lawsuit, who now see the current general situation of lawlessness and often discord on the council that simply do not want to invest in our city. I'm of the opinion that if we want to inspire that business confidence, if we want to get more people willing to invest capital into the city, we have to prevent illegal behavior, or frankly, even quasi-illegal behavior, that then results in a deterioration of those with capital believing that this city has a future, that this city and our downtown has a future, and that the Carousel Mall site has a future. The average person that drives through our city, that goes over the potholes, that go looks at the blight, sees an empty Carousel Mall site. There exists an alternate universe, an alternate timeline, where something actually is at the site today, and that unfortunately is a present that we do not currently live in. And so when we go look at the continued pattern of quasi-legal behavior, as I will call it, that's something we need to put an end to for the sake of getting more confidence into our city, getting more people traveling to our city, and a more revitalized downtown, and a greater city as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I don't see.
There's no more speakers.
Okay. Well, then, at this time, we will convene into closed session at 3:04 PM. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We had quite a lot to discuss in closed session. In fact, we're not done. We will be reconvening. We decided to come out and start the open session. So, thank you for being here. Thank you to those who are viewing remotely as well. I call to order this joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council, and mayor and the city council acting as the successor agency of the, to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Bernardino, the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority at 5:19 PM. Madam City Clerk, if we could, if you could please take the role.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Present.
Mayor Protem?
Here.
Councilmember Sharet?
Here.
Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
And Mayor Tran will not be participating in open session.
Thank you. At this time, we will proceed to the invocation and pledge.
Mayor Protem, may I just report out from closed session before we go on to that?
Sure.
Thank you. So, the mayor and council met in closed session on items A, B, C, and D on the agenda. There is no reportable action from those items, and the mayor and council will go back into closed session to discuss item E at the conclusion of open session. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have Pastor Paul E. Jones from Independent Trinity Benjamin E. Jones Community Resource will lead tonight's invocation. If you may please approach the podium at this time, and I guess if councilmember, we don't have anybody doing the pledge of allegiance, so I'll ask councilmember Ortiz if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance as well.
Amen. Would you please stand? Dear God, we thank you today for your loving kindness, your tender mercy. Thank you for all that you've done for us, how you woke us up this morning and started us on our way, oh God, allowing our feet to touch the ground one more time. Dear God, we ask you to come into our council meeting, oh God. We rebuke any kind of enemy that tries to stop this council from doing the job that you have them to do. Dear God, I ask you to bless every council member, bless everyone that's here, oh God. God, we give you the glory. We invite you into this meeting, and we give you the glory for all that's going to be done today. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
Thank you, councilmember. And again, just to apologize to the public for our late start, and thank you for being patient and hanging on with us. We're going to be moving a few things around because we have quite a few appointments, but let's go over to presentation. Would that be appropriate at this time? Because I'm not, I'm going to be going a little out of order here. Okay, so we have the proclamation for the National Library Week in the City of San Bernardino, April 6 through 12, 2025. This will be presented to Mr. Jim Pearson, the president of the City of San Bernardino Library Board. So if you may please join us up here, and I'll invite all council members to please join up in front as well. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read this here. Whereas in observance of National Library Week, patrons are encouraged to visit one or more of the four San Bernardino public libraries, either in person or virtually, at www.sbpl.org. And whereas the theme for National Library Week 2025, "Wake Up and Read," is a celebration highlighting the valuable roles libraries, librarians, and library workers play in transforming lives and strengthening our communities. And whereas besides patrons checking out books, doing research, using a PC, or enjoying free Wi-Fi, we offer various free activities such as preschool storytime, crafts, workshops, author visits, entertainment programs, literacy services, and classes to help people improve their lives at no cost. And whereas our online services for remote learners, including eBooks and e-Audiobooks, homework help via chat, and others are valuable to our patrons. And whereas with the support of our mayor and city council, we're looking forward to the opening of our Anamaker, I'm not sure what that is. Please tell me. Okay. That's not how it's spelled here. Where the public can build, create, and innovate in the fall of 2025. And whereas libraries help change lives in their communities, serving people of every age, education level, ethnicity, and physical ability. And whereas more than 22,000 people have our City of San Bernardino library card, myself included. And whereas our San Bernardino Public Library has served our community for 134 years, Feldheim Central Library celebrates its 40th anniversary this year. And if there is any city that can benefit from a free public library, it is here. That is certainly true. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of San Bernardino do hereby proclaim April 6 through the 12, 2025, as National Library Week in the City of San Bernardino. And it's presented on the second day of April, 2025. Thank you so much. Take a picture, and then if you want to say a few words as well.
I want to thank Mayor Tran and all the members of the city council for this, and thank all of you for being here. As it says in the proclamation, there are many programs at the libraries in San Bernardino. There aren't just books. There are lots of books, but there are lots of other programs too. And I think it would please you to find any of them available to you whenever they are advertised. Lots of flyers around. I don't know whether when you leave tonight, you can go through and see some of those. But anyway, I encourage you to take advantage of the wonderful libraries that are in San Bernardino.
Well, and thank you to our city manager, Deputy City Manager, the mayor and council for your support in the challenging years. And now we're in a little better position. And thank you to all the department heads, especially city attorney staff, who helped me out immeasurably. What councilman's, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Figueroa mentioned is, in the fall, we'll have an Anamaker space area from the Garner Holt productions, where people can build and create things here at Feldheim and do things with all kinds of machines. So look forward to that, perhaps September-ish, we hope. So that will be something you want to come back and see us with. And again, thank you very much to the mayor and council and everyone for your support.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, at this point, we'll move on to appointments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on items two through 16 at this time?
We have no requests to speak for any of the appointments.
I'm sorry?
We have no requests to speak.
No request to speak at this time. Okay. So then, at this point, I'm not sure if the council would like to proceed with approving all? Two through six? Or pull any of the, okay. So if. I have a motion by Councilmember Sanchez and a second by Councilmember Sharet. If, if we may please take the, unless you have, sure, please.
Madam City Clerk, these are all the agenda from the 19th on here? So I didn't know if we're going to vote online, but I. We can take a voice vote and we can get it updated.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passed, is unanimous.
Great. I'd like to welcome, let's see, I'll read off the names. I'm not sure if they're present here. We have Brenda Almansa, Brenda Bell, is it Ronika Nagalandi? Missyra Harris, Patricia Lynch, Laura Mitchell, Benjamin Pratt. Yeah, if you'd like to come up, we can do the swearing-in at this time as well. Maxine Henderson, Michael Segura, Ricky Van Johnson, Anthony Jones, Veronica Martindale, Andrina Armenta, Benjamin again, and Concepcion Mercado. And at this time, while everybody's coming up, I'd also like to say thank you to those who were previously in the same role and served as volunteers in those respective boards and commissions. And I would hope that at some point, through the city manager, we can have an opportunity to recognize the outgoing commissioners as well. So just as a recognition also, thank you so much.
If I can please have everyone raise their right hand, and you'll state your name for the record. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter? Please say yes.
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 So, thank you to all the new commissioners. We're going to go ahead and step aside. We're going to do some pictures, is my understanding, over here on the side. So, thank you all for stepping up, volunteering. It's truly appreciated. I've also had the opportunity to serve as a commissioner, and so I know the role that you're stepping up to and playing. So again, from, I guess, from the bottom of our collective hearts, thank you. Thank you so much for stepping up as volunteers and being leaders in our city as well. Thank you.
I think we're done with public hearing next.
Okay, I'm gonna start asking council members to please start taking your seats again. Okay, council members, please take your seats. We're gonna continue the meeting here. And again, thank you to all the commissioners, and to those outgoing commissioners as well. And it's my understanding that at some point, we're going to have a recognition of the outgoing commissioners as well. So, thank you for that. Okay, we have a quorum here. Okay, at this time, public comments will be heard for items on the open session and items not on the agenda. To address the city council, everyone must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk. Only those speaker cards turned into the city clerk will be allowed to address the city council. No late cards will be accepted. Each person should state their name for the record. Once again, if you require Spanish interpretation, we do have an interpreter on site. Please raise your hand at this time to indicate you will need interpreting assistance. In addition, we have interpreting listening devices available in the back as well. And so, I'm not sure if we have the, okay? En este momento... Yes. Yeah, I asked. Well, he always told, no. En este momento se escucharán los comentarios públicos para artículos de la agenda y artículos que no están en la agenda. Oh, he's gonna be...
Yeah, he's here.
Okay.
Sí, en este momento se escucharán los comentarios públicos para artículos de la agenda y artículos que no están en la agenda. Para dirigirse al consejo municipal, cada individuo debe completar una tarjeta de orador. Se debe completar la tarjeta de orador y entregarla a la secretaria municipal en este momento. Solo aquellas tarjetas de orador entregadas a la secretaria municipal podrán dirigirse al consejo municipal. No se aceptarán tarjetas tardías. Cada persona debe indicar su nombre para el registro. Si necesita interpretación en español, tenemos un intérprete presente. Por favor, levante la mano en este momento para indicar que requiere servicios. También tenemos aparatos disponibles para escuchar la junta en español.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
We have thirty speakers tonight.
Thirty? Okay. Go ahead and please start calling up the speakers, and if you hear your name, please start approaching either side of the, either podium is appropriate. Thank you so much.
Jan Robinson, Regine Christopher, Joe Solis, Al Palazzo, Mike Hartley, Kim Calvin, Christian Shaughnessy, Georgia L., Eric Marquez, Luis Ojeda, Ronika N.
Thank you. Christian, go ahead.
I believe I was halfway through all that, so I think anybody that's closer to the top can actually speak first. So, go ahead.
Good evening, council, and Mayor Protem. Kimberly Calvin here tonight, and I wanted to discuss an item on the agenda regarding the vouchers and the amendment to the amount of expenditures for that item. But I really think that what's more important is that we give, are giving it up date. How much money have we expended on motel vouchers? If anyone knows that answer. And then, number two, is that the city's solution on addressing the unsheltered in our city? Because I don't actually see that as a solution. It is a very, very temporary, two-week fix. And with all the time and all of the resources that the council has had, definitely after declaring homelessness as an emergency, we, what have we done? What have we built? How much does it actually cost to erect a temporary shelter? Do we have any buildings inside of our city where we can utilize for temporary shelters? So, to continue to give out two-week vouchers, acting as if that is going to solve our homeless issue here in the city of San Bernardino. I'm begging you to come up with something different, and I believe that you can do. When the question comes up why the council does not, is it just political will? Do we not want to? When every city around us is doing the exact same thing that we have the funding to do? The amount of money that's in our reserves, and just the amount of money alone that we have received for homelessness. We have not erected one building, not one temporary building, and all we continue to do is issue two-week homeless vouchers, which just recycles the problem. And we continue to see, as we push them out of our parks, now they're being pushed out of the flood channels. Where are they going? I don't know how many of you are on Next Door or have a Ring doorbell, but my, mine gives me an alert every time someone says that there is somebody who looks to be unsheltered on their porches, in their backyards, invading their private property. But what else are they supposed to do? It is raining outside, hailing outside, and we are allowing them to sleep on hard concrete. The city of San Bernardino is not showing any type of compassion or empathy to the people of this city that are unsheltered. And that then, then does fall on you. So, as we vote, as you vote to provide this amendment, what is the amount of money that you have spent on shelters, on vouchers, and what is the actual plan?
Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, our mayor Protem. I do believe I won't be here for the public hearing, because I have to get going relatively soon. But I did want to speak up in favor of the public housing project that will be occurring very, so rather, the continuance of that. Just about anything we can do to increase the housing stock in the city and provide more housing opportunities for the long-suffering people of this city, our working people, our young people, it's something that is sorely appreciated. As many of you folks have heard me say time and time again, if you are the average millennial, or if you are the average zillennial living in the city of San Bernardino, and dare I say, Southern California, you don't have that much hope of attaining homeownership and of entering the middle class in the traditional manner. And so, just about anything we can do to increase that housing stock and improve the lives of people who want to enter homeownership, who want to go and have lower rents so that they can build up their life savings to acquire that homeownership, I think is a very beautiful thing. Furthermore, I also want to give thanks for the discussion item, which has to do with changing around the meeting times for so many of our commissioners. We've had many wonderful commissioners that were just voted on to be sworn in, and I think that we should make those meeting times as accessible as possible. And so, that would be an utmost blessing, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council. My name is Georgia. I'm here again to speak on the animal services situation. And I just want to say that I think that the city should start to realize how reprehensible our Department of Animal Services is. Let's start with how they collect the animals, using catch poles, hanging them by the throats, and stuffing them into the vehicles. They come in terrified. They're labeled fearful. Then, they get killed without sedation. And, and then we render, we send them out for rendering into byproducts. These are people's pets. These are dogs and cats that they're rendering. How disgusting is that? I mean, when are we gonna change anything? Are we just gonna keep on doing what we're doing? I mean, what's gonna change? We got $700,000 requested, line number eighteen, on the consent calendar with no itemization. What's that money for? Do we know? It's very general. It's for a bunch of stuff. It's not for food, because Director Watson says we rely on donations for food. That's why the animals are starving. So, what are we doing? Are we changing anything? No. Animal Services brags about all the social media sites that they're now on, and let's just talk about Next Door. If they're on Next Door, they'll see that people are selling puppies constantly. You can go on Next Door, and you can get yourself a puppy, a kitten for sale. Why aren't they cracking down on that? I mean, it is illegal. All dogs over four months have to be spayed and neutered by mandate in this city. All bull dogs, pitbulls and bully breeds have to be spayed and neutered in the county. I think even in the state. I'm not sure what the law is in the state. This is a Department of Law Enforcement, code enforcement, and we aren't enforcing anything. And this is never going to stop. And we are feeding a system that is reprehensible and disgusting, and then we wonder why this city is not flourishing. This is like a heavy blanket and like a curse on our city, not just the animals, but the homeless. And I agree with Kimberly Calvin, what are we doing with that money? And Mr. Patel, I don't know, he, his name appears on, I hope he's not giving anybody any campaign funding. If he is, you guys shouldn't be voting on giving him more money. Just saying. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Palazzo. Welcome to your meeting.
Al Palazzo, council members, acting city manager. I was so moved by Senator Booker's marathon speech. I remember preparing at City Hall as the first president of future leaders of America for the visit of Senator Bobby Kennedy Senior to San Bernardino. I touched his hand that day. He was a champion for social justice. He would say he saw things not as they are, but as they should be. That is the kind of city manager that I would like to be. We stand on the shoulders of Dr. Martin Luther King, Cesar Chavez, and Senator Bobby Kennedy Senior. In 1964, as president of Franklin, a segregated junior high school, we invited the student councils of all the other junior high schools to a banquet and dance. Those friendships formed in the ninth grade continued through high school. I was welcomed on the challenge boat team to be part of a team with students from the most affluent areas of San Bernardino, the sons of doctors. But I had to beg my counselors to be put in the advanced math and science classes. From the time I started elementary school at Roosevelt to Muscat and Franklin, I had only two or three friends in classes in high school in the college prep. As city manager, I would create economic opportunity for the people of San Bernardino. When I take people on my vision tour, I start showing different types of development that do not exist in San Bernardino. I'm explaining the jobs that could be created in San Bernardino. I tell you exactly where these different types of developments could be built, on Mount Vernon, Baseline Waterman, Highland, downtown. I explain the different types of small businesses and the other businesses that will occupy and thrive in these buildings. The lives of the people of San Bernardino connected with the construction and use of will be transformed in many positive ways. Your tax waste and revenues will double to solve the problems that the city has. I will put on workshops during the week, on weekends, in the evenings, for the residents to explain in detail how working together we can rebuild San Bernardino. We need a city manager with a vision, who is a leader, building bridges, connecting with the people, and providing solutions addressing the needs of San Bernardino. Oh, I got twenty seconds. I love this city, and I love you guys, but sometimes you irritate me.
Thank you, Mr. Palazzo. Mr. Ojeda, welcome to your meeting as well. Thank you, sir.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Luis Ojeda here. Well, happy to be here once more, you know? I love the city. I'm gonna say like Robert Porter. I love San Bernardino. Well, I wanna start by thanking the city officials, the staff. I brought a concern up to the city manager and some of the staff member, and to Mayor Protem Juan Figueroa, about a particular place where we have a lot of trash, that we were about to clean it, and to my surprise, I drove around, and guess what? It was taken care of. So, thank you for that. I really appreciate that. So thank you for that, I really appreciate that. So, yeah, there's so many issues that we need to take care of, right? So, but we need to recognize when, you know, you guys do your job, and I really appreciate that. There's a lot of things that we need to do, right? For one is to be proactive, not reactive, right? And it seems like we always are reactive. For example, I know that law enforcement is trying to do their best, and I really appreciate that, but why does that or sometimes go to the asker of the city? When, if I walk out of here, right here, just across the street, I can find plenty of code violations. But everybody's here, you can see empty lot on the corner, full of weeds, the other one on the corner, same thing. So, I talked to the interim city manager a few weeks ago, and I told him, I said, look, why don't we start from the center out, from the downtown out? Why? Because it's like when you go to your, I mean, in your house, right? Let's say, I don't know, you want to present, you live in room better than your bedroom, right? Because let's say you have a party or whatever, right? You haven't done your laundry. So it's the same thing. Why don't we care and take care of the downtown first? Just make it clean. Let's try to get those old buildings that nobody's taking care of, these empty lots that nobody cares, everybody's like, well, it's absentee owners. Okay, so what are we doing about those absentee owners that they're not taking care of their buildings on their empty lots? How about we make them put a little nice fence, do a wet abeyment? So that way, we can make the city in downtown looking better. The first thing that the people are going to see when they come into the courts or to any of the local offices in downtown is that things are getting better, they're looking better, and they're clean. And then we can deal with the homeless, I know it's an issue that everybody's been talking about, but it's not going to get resolved until we get the money out of it, because everybody wants to make money, but nobody wants to fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. While we have the next speaker come up, Madam City Clerk, if we can, after the speakers have just called the names out again, thank you. Please, no, welcome to your meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm extremely excited to be here today. I have been a resident of San Bernardino for over four decades, having lived here and actually owned property for many, many years. Did I say four decades? I'm showing my age, right? Like many of us, I firmly believe in the significant and continuous improvements of our community and really addressing the needs of our residents. Unfortunately, too much time has been wasted during council meetings and afterwards on conspiracy theories, false allegations, payouts, uncovering so-called corruption, hiring and firings, and recently, a dog named Potato, as well as personal vendettas from people who use this platform and social media to spread false narratives and concocted allegations to sow doubt in citizens' minds about the city's ability to grow and to prosper. And for why? For their own personal gain. Now, we've all heard the definition of insanity, right? Right? It's doing the same thing over and over again and expecting what?
A different result.
A different result. Well, it's been over eight years of the same narrative, corruption, fraud, lawsuits, payouts, broken deals, et cetera. Enough is enough. The citizens of San Bernardino, we're tired. We've heard enough. And if you're tired of hearing the same narrative, what I want you to do right now is raise your hand. How many of you are tired of hearing the same narratives? All right, there you go. Proof. Okay? Thank you. It's time that we prioritize progress instead of wasting time and money dwelling on the past and frivolous nonsense. As a longtime San Bernardino resident, I urge the council to prioritize progress and positive developments, focusing on community needs. Because I will tell you, it is very disheartening to see so much time and energy wasted, especially when the city faces real challenges that were mentioned today and have been mentioned continuously, homelessness, crime, blight. In addition, council, guess what? Everything that you do is being scrutinized by potential investors. And a perception of weakness or division can deter business development and job creation. So as a council, you must be smart. You have to work together, avoid division, because those that want to do business with us, those that want to live in our city, guess what? They don't want to be around if a council is perceived as being weak. It's imperative that you showcase the positive developments in the city such as improvements, public safety, community outreach programs, parks, new business developments, educational highlights, how we're addressing homelessness, crime, blight, jobs, creating affordable housing, et cetera. This is what people want to hear. This is what we want to see. Okay? So I strongly believe that if we can focus on what's important for the city residents and stop allowing folks to use their egos and personal vendettas and work together instead of in silos, then we will become a vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable city.
Thank you very much.
Michael Meister, Gina Mureles, Carmen Gallegos, Timothy Prince, Jesus Garcia, Zazette Scott, Jeffrey D., Ethy Camacho, Ivan Garcia, Dolores Armstead.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
Today, I'm not going to talk about Mountain View Park Homeowners Association and how the domestic terrorist and the thief of the president of the homeowners association who just hit us with another $1,000 assessment after the investigation with the incompetent San Bernardino Police Department. It's obviously, nobody within the police department knows how to do a forensic audit, nor has the courage to arrest a domestic terrorist. I'm also not going to discuss San Bernardino City Unified, that up to this school year has 245 assaults that are documented. That's not the counting the ones that happened in the restroom or behind the building, nor the 11-year-old girl that was raped recently. Today, I'm here to discuss and to let you know how much I hate living in San Bernardino. I was raised in the city of Ontario. I raised my children in the city of Rancho Cucamonga. When I purchased in San Bernardino, I purchased down the street because I was half a mile away from the San Bernardino Police Department. I was expecting the level of service that I received when my son was a year old in Ontario. I hate the fact that the city cannot provide its citizens with the bare necessities. We have been without a functioning library, a computer lab, for over a year. I don't understand why every city in San Bernardino County, except the city of San Bernardino, does not have a computer lab. That's a bare necessity. Children needed to do research projects, they needed to print, people in the city without funds needed for job searches. I have a car, I have car insurance, I have money to put gas in it, I can go to Highland, which is my favorite library, or Riverside, but I should be able to walk and use a library here. And the city of Ontario put in a new library with new programs and everything within four hours. That's how I found out that we have been without a functioning computer lab for over a year. They were down four hours. I don't want to hear that there's no money, because you know what? I pay my tax bill every year. And if you don't have money, all you have to do is make a cut on payroll, management payrolls. City manager, cut their payroll. Because they're getting paid too much money for the pathetic services that the public employees of the city of San Bernardino are providing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hi, welcome. Please, go ahead and proceed.
It's always exciting, huh? Hello, my name is Shazette Scott, and I am from Family Assistance Program. We have several programs here out of the city of San Bernardino. Good evening, ladies and leaders in community. April 1st marks the beginning of Second Chance Month, a time to raise awareness about the challenges people face after incarceration, and to celebrate the life-changing power of opportunity. At Family Assistance Program, this month holds special meaning as we work year-round to provide the support justice-impacted individuals need to rebuild their lives and thrive. Nationally recognized since 2017, Second Chance Month began with the purpose to highlight the barriers faced by over one in three Americans with a criminal record. Backed by bipartisan support and a presidential proclamation, it has grown into a nationwide movement to promote redemption, reduce stigma, and expand access to second chances. At its core, Second Chance Month calls on us to challenge the stigma of justice involvement and advocate for fair policies and programs that give people a real opportunity to start again. That's why our organization's focus is to offer comprehensive reentry services across San Bernardino County, providing the tools, support, and hope people need to overcome barriers and build successful futures. Our next step and higher programs walk alongside people returning from incarceration, helping them secure meaningful employment, reach their goals, and renew their sense of hope. Thank you. And this is where we all clap and say, thank God for second chances.
Next speaker, please. Welcome, sir.
Okay. Ah, okay. It's kind of ironic, but very well appropriate that I'm here during Library Week. Hello, my name is Michael Meister. I'm a resident here in San Bernardino, and I'm here today to lend a voice to my neighbors that need to be heard. The majority of the residents in the San Bernardino areas are already marginalized and living at poverty levels. They can't afford home PCs, laptops, and printers. They depend on the public libraries like this one that are supposed to have updated computers with availability to make printouts at affordable prices. Without these services, it leaves them and us at a disadvantage, especially to other, to the other residents that live throughout other areas of California that have public libraries with functioning computer labs. The children here in San Bernardino already fall behind the averages in education and literacy, and not having access to public computers will leave them even further behind in the digital age. Parents also need public computer access to search for jobs and benefits that are due to all residents in the entirety of the California state. Let's get these computers back in our libraries and get the residents of San Bernardino equal time, I mean, equal as the rest of California. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. City Manager, if we can, please follow up regarding this issue and possibly provide an update to the council.
Yes, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, we have actually, we'll quickly mention, we have a substantial amount of money coming to the library in process, updating their entire system, so, computer system, so we'll address that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Prince, welcome. Welcome to your meeting, sir.
Good evening, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Prince, lifelong resident of San Bernardino and 30-year attorney, practicing in downtown San Bernardino or what's left of it. Most of the attorneys, as you know, have moved to greener pastures, redlands, other communities. Fortunately, we still have the courthouse here in San Bernardino. The item on the agenda I'd like to address first is number 24 on the boards, commissions, and city advisory committees. The charter review committee has not met by order of the city manager, previous, many previous city managers ago, in the revolving door city manager position. I guess they thought everything in the city of San Bernardino is just running perfectly and no changes are needed. We were never given a chance to dialogue with the city manager or discuss that arbitrary decision. We had work in progress as a charter review committee. I'm glad Ricky Van Johnson is reappointed back to that committee, but let's have that committee reconstituted and meeting again. There's a lot to talk about. We were sold a city charter and we were told that it would fix the city's problems. The city is in worse shape than when that charter, the new charter was implemented. There are changes that can be made, and regular review and discussion of the city's governing document is what all responsible cities do. We didn't do that with our historic city charter, and that's why that charter got outdated and thrown away carelessly instead of updated. Items not on the agenda, I echo the comments made about the library computers, the delay of over a year. I know the library experienced a computer invasion and problem with the computers libraries, the library's computer system, but that's not acceptable to keep patrons without internet access. That could have been wired up in a weekend. That's completely unacceptable. I'm glad the city manager is committed to look into that immediately. We are a city with socioeconomic need, and not everybody has their own computer. So it's just vital. I can't even imagine two weeks without computers in downtown San Bernardino. Speaking of downtown San Bernardino, the new city manager has not had a chance to have a great effect yet, but every night you walk outside and the streetlights aren't on in downtown, I just, I don't even know how anybody can collect a paycheck in the temporary city hall. Why are we still meeting in this temporary building? Why is, why are we paying rent for Vannier Tower office space? Why is, why is the public not regularly updated on the efforts to reopen our beautiful Caesar Pelle City Hall and get downtown back in shape? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's our next speaker? Welcome.
Just push the button, there you go.
Yes, I'd like to see the city of San Bernardino banning fireworks in San Bernardino to help prevent all the deaths and kids who got hurt with fireworks, they got blind, fingers cut off or burned off, not cut off, excuse me. And I'd like to see also the city repairing the sidewalks in San Bernardino from 13th and D Street on down, across 8th Street over, and I think they should do something about that. And also, the bicycles who have motors on them, not ride on the sidewalks, because it's only for wheelchairs and walkers and people with canes and crutches, but people don't care, and we'd like to see the city do something about that. And also, we'd like to see the city do something about the homeless people, getting buildings built here in San Bernardino, which I think is really appropriate if they get it done. And I really think the city should do a lot more to San Bernardino to make it look a lot better. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Ms. Armstead, welcome to your meeting as well. Thank you. Please.
Excuse me. Good evening. First, congratulations to all the new commissioners. You have a lot of work ahead of you, and God be with you, because you need the help. My first question is regarding the homeless services and programs. Do you receive a report from the organizations that we keep giving money to? Who's getting served? How are they getting served? How much is food? How much is housing? How much, what is happening with all the money? Why are, and why are we continuing the voucher system? By now, we should have housing. We should have a place for the homeless to go. We keep throwing them out of parks and now out of the, whatever. They need a place to go. We have city land, we have quite a few vacant buildings. Can we please set a place up for the homeless to go to? And they need to be different. You need families, you need single people, you need vets that, you need seniors. One shop fits all, it does not work. They all have different needs. We need to take care of the homeless, and what is going on with the funding? We haven't had a We haven't had a report, but we see them out more. We see them being thrown out, but nothing is, we don't see any resolutions. Second one is council meetings. Why do you keep moving the council meetings earlier in the day? I know the strategy is to keep people from coming to talk to you. The strategy is to keep us away. Why not have closed session early, like, how about having, instead of having a closed session early at 3:00, why not move it a regular meeting down an hour to 6:00 so we people can attend again? Because it's really hard when you're working to try and get here. We need to be able, you need to leave it open for the citizens to approach you. You've made it so we can't. Very difficult. Item 17, the 45 million in bonds for the housing. There's no fiscal impact to the city's general fund. That was great. Councilmember Ortiz explained it to me, and I really appreciate it. She explained it in English, not an attorney. She explained it in English. Can you please explain it in English to the audience out there and here, what it means for us? We need housing, but how is it being paid for? Are we paying for it, or is it taken care of? It's not clear. She did make it clear for me. Okay. Next, San Bernardino just got ranked as the least serene city in the state. We're the dirtiest city, the least serene city, the most crazy council people. When can we get a positive ranking? Don't you people give a damn that all we get is negative reviews? I'd like to see a positive review. And I can say the previous council, Mayor on the left side, and some of you old school up there, you haven't done anything. Mr. Charette, Mr. Sanchez, why aren't we doing anything? Why aren't you doing anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good afternoon.
My name is Jesus Garcia.
My name is Jesus Garcia.
And the reason why I'm here.
Because I'm very bothered with East Valley Water District.
In the middle of February.
They began to construct a warehouse behind my property.
And there was no notification about this project.
The reason why I purchased this property because of the view that I had of the mountains.
And so the issue now is that I have, my view is this, this building that's blocking the view.
And I spoke to the superintendent of the project.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams.
He said that the only explanation was a common sense one.
When there's a project, there has to be the, the neighborhood around has to be aware of the impact that's going to be had because of the project.
And this did not happen in my case.
And when I spoke to Mr. Williams, I received a letter three days later from the water department.
When there was only one week left to finish the construction of the project.
This is the photograph of the before.
And after.
I'm not sure if this warehouse is going to have any chemicals.
And having a property of about 10 acres, they went ahead and put this warehouse right next to my property.
So anytime now that the, the big rigs come to pick up supplies or any tools.
There's a lot of dust that enters into my yard.
And I don't know who to go to to solve this problem and so that we are not taken advantage of.
There should have been some kind of a request or to, to know what kind of impact there was going to be on the neighbors.
And the reason why we purchased this property was because of the, the view, but now we have a bit of a trauma because of the lack of view.
And I approach you all to see what kind of solution you can give me.
And another thing I want to mention with regards to San Bernardino.
And I want you to drive all the way from the 210 to the 10 to see what kind of impact it has on your vehicle on the street on Waterman.
There are potholes, there's no continuity in the lines, and it's just a disaster for vehicles.
That's all I have to say, and I hope you can help me.
The line between San Bernardino and Highland.
Can we connect him with the appropriate agency?
Okay.
So if there's somebody that we can connect.
I have that information here if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm at the, I live in San Bernardino. I've been coming here for quite a long time, and I just want to compliment the city for bringing in a hydrant for the seat, for the street that I'm located, because I've seen so many fires. I think they should have put a fire department there. But anyways, they also had uneven ground since they've been taking so many vehicles which weren't theirs. I think they should have just gave us tickets to begin and got those chop shoppers who they knew. And they went in overboard on that. I think they should have took care of decoding the city first before they picked up any vehicles, because that was more important, too. Because the uneven ground could trip and fall, and since you're taking vehicles that weren't theirs, they should have just, you know, and they just, you know, sold it anyways. But aside from that, that's transportation for people, and I was one of the people. And, and then I said, well, if you're taking away transportation, might as well fix the city, get the sidewalks set. But also, you know, like I said, looking around, I've never had to deal with so much ground coverage, and what I had to deal with was medical issues as well, but on top of one, on top of the other, it really was ridiculous. And three years later, when I did call earlier, three years before, how long would it take the sidewalk to be fixed? I said, two to three years. I was surprised, but I'm glad that there's been a lot of paperwork, a lot of attending meetings, going to the right departments, and they had to hire people, too. So that was a step process. San Bernardino, but it's been done for a long time. So there's like before this administration, before this city workers, it was other workers as well. So they got to kind of go at the coverage, because we were next to the forest, and they should take a sign that says, do not let fireworks go on, because they allowed children to be endangered, and allowed them to burn things thinking it's okay, and it's not. And in traction, the people who were flipping cars and bikes in there and the burnt buildings and trying to sell it are the ones that were answering the phone, were the responders, and got mad at me. And I had to go to court for that. And every now and then, they'll even tell me that. Oh, are you at work? I go, no. But anyways, like I said, this is a, I don't know who's answering the phone deal. But like I said, we know when we go to court, but it shouldn't come to that. But the city had a battle from before, before this. So there's like a lot of paperwork, and with all this high techs, high tech going on, it should have been quicker. So, you know, there's a lot of hiring somebody to use the right paperwork, but I'm glad also they had a sidewalk put in. I mean, I thought we should have put a star on it. But anyways, I do want to compliment the city on working on its issues and tackling what they can, and even with homelessness on or off the street is because if they're burning buildings, nobody's going to be hired, nobody's going to be living anywhere. It's unsafe. If you've got violence in the workplace and high numbers, even with weapons, that's OSHA laws. They should have went to every property because you're burning both ends, the property owner and the city, not attending where they should. And that just meets in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, welcome. Welcome to, welcome, sir.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Ivan Garcia. I'm a volunteer resident, also CPP alumni, Mr. Gilguardo, Broncos. CPP develops leaders, in my opinion. I've been here since 2018, and I got a couple of items. I actually made some notes today to go over. First, I'd like to make a prayer. God almighty, watch over our beautiful city staff, employees, and those that love our city and help us make San Bernardino great again. Commissioners, today we appointed 15, I counted 15 commissioners on these commissions and committees. I don't know if that's a city record. That's, that's awesome. Como dice Brinko Zeras, wow. I'd also like to recognize Brenda Almansa for Parks and Recreation for wanting to be part of the change of our city and making San Bernardino great again. And I, I would like to say, please, 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 schedule all commissions, committees to meet monthly and delete the word council from your dictionary. There's a lot of Parks and Recreations, for example, meetings have been canceled. I think the last meeting we had was about a year ago. And then like another guest speaker said, making meetings accessible on, for the time frames for different SB residents. And then another question I have is when, when will Code Enforcement Commission be founded and meet on a monthly basis? We, to hold property owners, residents accountable to clean up and do their part. Huge round of applause to the city staff, employees, and those that care about our city. CRM corrections have improved. I've seen some be closed out in literally less than an hour. That's a huge round of applause. Keep up the good work, please. CRM submitted by myself to date is 350 plus, and I got a lot more coming, and I hope they're not just closed out. I hope we can actually go to the site and, and look at these CRMs. Potholes, graffiti, yard maintenance, you name it, homeless encampments. Mr. Kinchapa, thank you for creating Invest SB on LinkedIn, and to the beautiful staff that's working on that and bringing more businesses to our city. Chief Goodman, boots-on-the-ground officers and officer staff are keeping us safe and helping make SB great again. And then please clean up our city so you can earn more gold stars. I've been sending emails late at night because I drive around the city and follow up. My main things are light fixtures, potholes, you name it. Please continue to be positive and things will happen. And I'd like to end it with this. I'll leave you a quote from The Secret. I recommend everybody YouTube The Secret, the video, for those that are not very positive, please watch that video. This is a quote, "Your thoughts and your feelings create your life. What you focus on with your thoughts and feelings is what you attract in your experience." And like Mr. Porter says, "I love San Bernardino." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Do we have any speakers?
I have additional slips. Darrell Terrell, Junior Correo, Marvin Newman, Terry Boykins, Ethan Flores, Lydia Savala, Sharon Negretti, Ray Bloom, and Angel Huerta.
Thank you. If you hear your name, please come up to the podium. Welcome.
Hi, my, hi, good evening, Honorable City Council. My name is Darrell Terrell. I'm a resident of the city of Reno Valley in Riverside County. I'm here because of catalytic converter thefts. Some may call them a victimless crime. Ask the person who can least afford it. The one who has to pay a high insurance deductible, living paycheck to paycheck. Ask the person who's been held up by gunpoint. Ask the person who goes months without a vehicle that they rely on for work to drop off their kids to pick up granny's medicine. That's why your honorable county board of supervisors passed the ordinance back in August 23rd, 2022, which was, which was called the one-and-done catalytic converter unlawful possession ordinance. And what that said is if a person steals one catalytic converter and have no proof of ownership, they face criminal liability. They face jail time. So in my county, where I live, AB 641, if you guys don't know, is the catalytic state converter law. And what that says, it sets up for a person can steal up to eight catalytic converters and nothing happens to them. No joke, because the law says nine or more is okay, as long as you had an automotive dismantling permit. So what does that say? It just says, hey, you can steal up to eight. So you're making, you're making this crime illegal. So my thing is, is if there is four, there are, there are four cities in, in your county. It's 20 out of 24 that have the one-and-done catalytic converter ordinance. What I'm asking you as, as a council is to adopt what San Bernardino County did, the same ordinance like I did, because what we did, and like I said, in Riverside County, we adopted that ordinance. All 28 cities are under the same ordinance. I went to 19 of them, and right now, currently I've been to, across this county, I've been to Ventura, Los Angeles County, I've been to Imperial, I've been to Santa Barbara, I've been to Santa La Bispo, I've been to Tulare, Kern County, all in the effort to get us on the same page. We cannot count on Sacramento to do this job, because they won't do it, it's too polarized in Sacramento. We as counties and cities, especially in San Bernardino County, we got to get together. So my start is here, but I'm going to continue to go through San Bernardino County cities to get every last one of you guys' cities on the same page, so we can show these creeps, we mean business. We don't tolerate crime of nohow. So I hope you guys consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lydia Savala, and I've had two catalytic converters stolen. I just junked the car today, Honda Element. Can't park it on the street. So I'm here to talk about numbers today because I've got this thing for numbers, and I finished my data sort for '24. I had done '20, '23, and now I've done '20, '24. The total intake of animals in '23 was approximately, well, 7,028, and the intake of animals in 20, subsequent year '24, 9,000, approximately 9,000 animals. And if you subtract the animals from the other cities, you're back, you're down to about 8,000. So we went from 7,000 animals intake approximately to 8,000. That's a 1,000 increase. That's not good, because data analysis requires comparison, and we're not going in the right direction. We're going in the wrong direction. The numbers should be going down. The tragedy is that, you know, people will tell you, this is really complicated. Well, this isn't NASA. We're not putting a rocket on the moon. This is an animal, this is a dog pound. It's not even an animal shelter, because an animal shelter does rehabilitation. This is a dog pound. 50%, again, I remind you, 50% of the animals end up dead. '23 and '24, one-fourth came in dead, one-fourth euthanized. So the problem is that we've got this vehicle, $1.1 million vehicle that's gathering dust that we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony over a year ago, and we have yet to use this, this vehicle for spay neuter. Your, your constituents aren't going to pay $300 to $500 to have a dog spayed or neutered. I assisted someone from, that lives near Cal State, who had a litter of puppies, and I had her female spayed. And two months later, she calls and she says, I need that certificate of spay. And I says, sure, I'll send you a picture. She says, because the animal control came by and they're checking for licenses, which, oh, score, oh, man, thank you. They're checking for licenses, but the animal control officers told her she doesn't have to get the dog spayed or neutered. So we've got like a major problem here with the vision of, of what our city should be doing in terms of spay neuter. The Animal Action League of Joshua Tree is a nonprofit. Do you know how many animals a year they spay and neuter? 5,000 animals. That's like 4,000 more than your city even adopted. And if it wasn't for the nonprofits, you'd really be stuck in swamp water, because they adopted two times as many dogs as our city.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome.
Good evening, good evening, city council, city staff. It's a pleasure to speak before you. My name is Ethan Flores. I'm a student and community member. It was the 19th century philosopher John Stuart Mill who once said, "It is better to be a human being dissatisfied than a pig satisfied." Better to be a Socrates dissatisfied than a fool satisfied. And living in San Bernardino, I used to find myself as a dissatisfied pig. As a resident of San Bernardino, I have noticed that many of our city problems have been caused by Councilman Theodore Sanchez. While these problems are numerous and varied, I would like to highlight the not-so-small homelessness problem that is out of control in Ward 1. As many of you know, there is a large unhoused encampment by Nunez Park. Yet, what many of you do not know is that Nunez Park is located by the Leito Creek Basin that is likely, like many flood ditches, county land and private property is used by the unhoused to evade our city encampment suites. When we move these unhoused individuals out of their encampments all over the city, they simply move out and occupy this area which leads back into the park. This highlights the fact that right now displacing these camps has yet to lead to a sustainable solution or problem. We are pushing them out of one park to the next, then pushing them out of the park trajectory and property to another adjacent property. We need a resolution and ambitious effort to work towards rehabilitation of the unhoused while working with county departments such as OSS and APS to lead to the charge of this effort. This effort is led by Councilman Dr. Ortiz and other council members to start moving and working alongside the county. Thank you for that. It is the sad truth that Councilman Sanchez has been an ineffective leader on this issue, and many others. You don't have to take my word for it. All you have to do is literally look out this window. On top of the human rights disaster by Nunez Parks, the blight and violence in Ward 1, we have numerous accounts of abject corruption by Councilman Sanchez. If Councilman Sanchez does not resign, we as a community must recall him. I urge you all to vote yes on the recall and join us, the people of San Bernardino. And just to add on to that, I also noticed that a lot of you have issues with the trash, which we, as the people of San Bernardino, are working on doing a large-scale cleanup that should be organized by our councilmen, but it's not. Thank you.
Hello, welcome, sir. Good evening.
Honorable mayor and council members, thanks for your time. I've been a resident here for almost 50 years. Same house, same corner, same scenario. Taxpayer, I got great-looking property. My concern is, we were left in the dust. The side street is Alameda, from 28th to the end of the crosstown freeway. We were left in the dust. Deteriorated streets, sidewalks, raised sidewalks, approaches, all kinds of different things that weren't taken care of during the process of the streets being repaved. I've lived here that long, about when you've seen the streets paved twice in those many years. I'm concerned with the neighbors, the sidewalks. I represent them. The appeasement, we have a great curb appeal. I'm proud of where I live. I have the best-looking house in the entire area. And I hate to see the deterioration of one little street that hasn't been taken care of. I asked for the ruts and the chuck holes and everything else that was in the street. I got my neighbors to call in. They come out and throw cold patch out there. It's going to last about a few days. That's a slap in the face. I want to know where these questions go, or where there be an answer to. How do we get the answers? When are you going to take care of this process? It's just a small street, and we're proud of what we got. We're taxpayers, and we're trying to keep our property up and not let the renters and other people run us down. I want to keep the pride that I have of this city that I, since I lived here. I retired from this city. I'm a veteran. I want to see things done. I want to see some action. I want to say that my say tonight had some meaning and make the neighbors come together and be proud and be a nice community of neighbors again. If you would do that, I'd be so appreciative because you've done well in other areas. But don't forget, we're taxpayers too. You're the guys who put the signs on our sidewalk when it comes to election time. So, remember that too. So, thank you for your time, and I hope to see some progress and not waste the city's money or the workmen that come out there to throw a bunch of asphalt out there. That's a slap in the face. I could do that. I was a maintenance man. I can see the shoddy, that's shoddiness. That's a poor approach to a fix. That's poor. Represent our city, and let's get it done, okay? Talk to your neighbors.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Yes, my name is Angel Fuerta Jr. I'd like to thank everybody from the council, city council, regarding the airport, the Malvernian Bridge, Fifth Street Park, the Waterman Gardens redevelopment. But also, I want to talk about where I live. I want to know whose my ward is. I live off of San Bernardino Avenue and King Street. I don't know who's my ward is. I never seen them, been around me. Regarding pavement of the roads. My dad lived 92-years-old once. He saved his paved road once. Why can't we... Citizens matter. Citizens matter. We pay taxes. Why is it not getting done where I live? Why? You guys have workers that go by, neighborhoods, cities, they take notes. You guys have records. You guys have filing records when it's been done. Why are they doing it over and over again? One street in five years? Why can't they do the residents? They don't visit us? They don't know us? They don't talk to us? Please, help us out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, welcome.
Good evening, council. Mayor's not here, but staff and residents. My name's Ray Blum. I'm a lifelong resident of San Bernardino. Business owner, and now the president of newly-formed Downtown Neighborhood Association. First of all, I wanted to thank our council members that came out, Councilmember Flores and Ortiz, to our launch two weeks ago. We had the mayor out, and we had about 200 guests that came out that night to, you know, be a part of the relaunch of our downtown, I believe, and work towards something better. I want to thank everybody for that. I wanted to let you know that we're planning a follow-up. That night, we did a survey. We had almost 100 responses of what are the priorities. On April 22nd, we're going to be holding a planning session. We'd love to invite the council, mayor, leaders and city residents out, business owners. It's going to be located at Noah's Restaurant. It's going to be from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a lunch session, planning session, so we hope you can make it. And the goal is to be able to see what our top goals are and come up with some plans to achieve them. I want to thank you guys for the work you are doing. I recognize we're not an easy city, and I hope that we can come together behind the vision and create some unity and create some progress in our downtown. I will concur what Mr. Prince said. I would love to see us look at ways to get back in our city hall. I hate that when I come down to the city, I got to figure out which building we're in and that we're renting. One of the things I believe in as part of breaking the cycle of poverty is moving from renters to owners. We own a beautiful city hall, and we need to find a way to get back into it. With that being said, this Saturday, April 5th, there's going to be another event that we're going to be part of in downtown. pastors United is holding a prayer vigil at City Hall at 10:00 a.m., and we'd like to invite the public and our leaders out that night. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. I believe you might be the penultimate speaker.
Almost.
Sir, welcome to the public...
Mayor Protem, thank you. Terry Boykins, Executive Director of Project Fighting Chance. Honored to be here. March 8th, Project Fighting Chance was, how do I say? Exposed to a national spotlight with PBS. If you didn't have a chance to see the segment, we were able to be featured in that. Once again, prior to that, we had been featured with Jim Fallows for a number of years, and then, of course, Hopeful's, which was a journey of our competition team. But on that day, Project Fighting Chance, as a result, received overwhelming response from around this country of individuals that were cheering for what we were doing and, of course, the efforts with Terrible Terry Washington and the accomplishments that he's had. We receive outpouring, to this day, from individuals around the country that we do not know, that wanted to champion what was happening in San Bernardino. The, "You can do it, we're counting on you guys." This is from around the country. And in addition to the outpouring of support, we also received from individuals around this country donations that was absolutely phenomenal. Individuals we do not know. Individuals that heard about what was going on in San Bernardino, what we were doing with young people. And these people sent checks, and they continue to send checks because they want San Bernardino to win. Because they saw that we have champions, that we're able to work with after school, competing nationally, ranked. It was absolutely phenomenal. And so, I wanted to let you all know that that was something that was very positive that came into San Bernardino with PBS championing that particular exposure. And so, we appreciate being able to support what is happening. We are at Ruben Camples Community Center in Nunez Park. We're very excited about being there, and we look forward to an ongoing relationship with the Parks Rec to stay there. I say that because we also are preparing for our summer enrichment program, which begins in July, which most of schools and programs are dark in July. Project Fighting Chance is going to stay open. And we are going to commit to having 100 youth that we will have from 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night. We will commit to that. But we also need to make sure that when we had the recognition of CDBG award last year, we don't know where that stands. We have not had any updates. We do want to make sure that that room and those spaces are ready, that those, that space is cool during the summer. It gets very hot in Ruben Camples. And so, we were hoping to use some of the CDBG funds to make sure that these 100 young people that are going to be coming there for an experience of fitness and enrichment and arts, that we're ready to go as a staff to accommodate them with those resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all the work that you do in the community. You do a great job. Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome. Welcome to your meeting.
Hi, Sharon Negretti. I don't understand why city council members are so complicit with the systematic abuse and neglect at the animal shelter. I just don't get it. I don't know why it's ignored. The shelter's recent post on Facebook about their new offices generated over 140-plus comments that were all negative, that they were furious, that they prioritized those offices over getting the new kennels in there. That shouldn't have been done. The shelter director is a rogue agent operating with impunity. Animal control officers harass citizens. There are substandard reports demonstrating incompetence and corruption. This isn't negligence, it's a deliberate disregard for the animal welfare and citizen safety. The recent shelter tour was a sad attempt to cover up the corruption. Treasure Ortiz, where are those promised vets? The potato case is another ridiculous money grab. The judge's final judgment is absurd. He stated, "Since the time that the dog potato was taken into possession by the city, there have not been any further reported incidents involving any dog similar to the dog potato. This corroborates the city's identification of the dog potato as the dog responsible for the subject incident." Did he forget that the stray dog that did bite was impounded too? Did he just overlook that? Due process is a constitutional right. Now, Emily and her husband are not able to have their baby shower because they can't afford it. These are taxpayer citizens. This should not have happened to them. At the last Animal Control Commission meeting, I sent you an email, Sandra Abara. After the meeting was adjourned, adjourned, Vice Chairperson Gary Blake's dismissal of a concerned citizen as he called her a whack job out loud, as he told her to get out. This was, the meeting was adjourned. This exemplifies his incompetence and arrogance. Chris Watson's aggressive confrontation by getting in her face could have been handled by simply calling security. There are better ways to address taxpayer citizens' concerns than to be forced to remove, to be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. And, oh, we have one more. Mr. Correo, welcome, sir.
Junior Correo, good afternoon, Mayor Protem, and council, and staff. I continue to be positive. I mean, there are just so many things that we're not aware of that are happening in this city that we're moving forward. I mean, if you want to dwell on the negative, you're going to look at this city, and you're going to say, "We're on the down." We've got a lot of good things happening, but we need to start focusing. I saw three people speak today, and I want to thank Lynn Merrill for stepping up and going, talking to that one individual that had a problem. I want to thank Theodore, and I want to thank Juan that came down and had these problems down here. They wanted to get... I'm going to get involved. I mean, I saw these commissioners get commissioned today, and I'm going to get involved because we have too many people coming here thinking they're going to ask you a question, you're going to answer. It doesn't happen that way. They come here, they come here, they come here, they complain, they complain, they leave, and they badmouth our city because they don't get an answer. I've got two people here I'm going to follow up on. And you know what? I'm going to talk to the commissioner that's responsible for this, and if they don't handle it, I'm going to handle it. Because I'm focused on moving this city forward. And you know what? I'm tired of hearing these people come down and complain, and nobody listens to them, you know? I mean, our council people have a huge responsibility. Not that they shouldn't be aware of this, but if we let every person go up here and badmouth every single one of our council person because there's a little bit of speeding in their neighborhood, their street's not paved, there's potholes, there's theft, I voted for my councilman to make the decisions on the multimillion-dollar choices that are going to really help our city. If they've got to spend 10 hours running all over town addressing potholes, that's not what I elected my council person for. I mean, our commissioners should be involved. I mean, I am on Public Works, Public Safety, which is Public Works, PD, and Fire. And anybody that comes to this podium and badmouth our city because of that, I need to go get their number and follow up. And I will. And I am going to continue that. Every meeting I come here, when I see somebody complain, I'm going to go get their number. We may not have a solution, but you know, we can tell them we don't have a solution. When I come to you with a problem, all I want you to do is tell me, "I can help you, or I can't help you." And I think that's what these people want. And I'm here to encourage people to put faith in our commissions. And if the commissions can't do it, I mean, I go to Fred when I need to. But I want to try to take care of the small stuff to not bother Fred. Kim Canas, I walk with Kim Canas. She's not even in my ward. But you know what? I respect what she's doing. I respect every single one of my council people, and thank you so much for what you do for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Correo. And thank you also for serving as a commissioner. Thank you. Mr. Moresquez, welcome. Welcome to your meeting. Good evening.
I'm Eric Moresquez. It's a pleasure to speak before all of you today. Now, after my last public comments, someone I admire greatly gave me some advice. If I want to be taken seriously, I should talk about what's on the agenda. She's right. And I didn't really think anything of it until I realized, do I really want to end up a politician taken seriously supposedly? Like my pathetic example of a city councilman? Or even worse, supposed community leaders who just brown-nose to them because they get a seat on a commission? And gatekeep what few community outreach groups there are that are active? Now, let's see, where was I? I want to be the kind of person who can foster real togetherness and change, and not just bitter and old. Most of the people I want to reach out to won't listen or hear this. But I want them to know we must exercise our right to assemble peacefully and solve problems together. problems together. We cannot rely on impotent leadership. Okay, so that's the professional portion. Oh, also, I had this little event the other day, the Eric Marquez Assembly. A couple of people showed up. It was fun. Well, either way, now it's a private group now. So if you're interested, you can contact me. We would love to have you. We have at the Enterprise Building, well, currently, maybe other places in the future. And you can check my website, Eric Marque, oh, wait, eric-marquez.com. You can get my contact information through there. And now, check my website info. Oh, yes, Cat and Garden Report. I still think I'm better than all of you because I have a cat and also my garden's full of weeds. Oh, and I'd rather be a clown than idiot. I don't know where I got that from. 24 seconds. Brown-nosing, rather be a clown, cat, garden. Also, I want to save the best for last, which is why I came up last. Also, Junior's an apologist for Fred. Thank you.
Mr. Marquez, thank you. And Mr. Solis, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you for keeping the lights on. I think we have many potential U.S. senators in our, in our community that can really bring the, the community together. So really quick, I wanted to talk about the item about getting our commissions to meet at a, in a time that could actually get there. I've been a commissioner on the Parks and Recreation for about two, two years and maybe two months. And we've met, we haven't met in about nine months. Now, it was a lot easier when I was able to get here. I worked in the community, but now I'm working a lot further off. I just got off work. And it's difficult to do. So I think as, as much positivity we had with our 15 new commissioners, thank you, council members for having such a large stock of great council, of great commissioners, let's, let's get them to be able to actually work. Because if anyone enjoys the farmer's market, that came through the, the Parks and Recreation Commission. So I, I believe most of you have been there and it's benefiting the community. So great things can happen from those, from those commissions. They're almost like, as I think our founders would say in the context of federalism, they're like little mini laboratories of democracy and ideas that filter up to the decision-makers and really bring a positivity on our commission. And real quick, and I don't know how many buildings we have within the city that have an American flag on top of it, but recently I was looking around our downtown and I noticed that on our top of ours, vacant city, city hall, we have a flag that is Old Glory that is a little tattered. And I don't know if it would take Public Works to get up there. It's a, I know an eight-story building or a seven-story building, so I know it's just not just something we can easily do, but if we can also look at any other flags where we have maybe other American flags hanging and maybe replace those, we can ask our congressional representatives, maybe even the White House, to get some free flags from the federal government that has flown above public buildings. So it'd be great, the, the least we can do is have, at least our indoor flags are, you know, not exposed to the weather, to get those newer flags up so we can see that those things are properly displayed for all of our residents. That's all I got. Thank you so much, city, San Bernardino.
Thank you. Any other?
There's no more speakers.
No more speakers? Okay, well, thank you to all the speakers this evening for joining us and participating in the people's meeting. We will be moving on to the city manager's updates at this time. Mr. City Manager, if we may please proceed with the-
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the city council and community. It's my pleasure to give you the city manager update. City of San Bernardino has begun work to repair 27 small street segments and locations across the city. The $5.8 million project will be ongoing and take approximately one year to complete. You'll see in this graphic here, the project, 30th and East Street, during and after. And I will share with the community, this council is committed to a significant amount of public improvements over the coming months and years. So stay tuned for that. Next up, we have applications open for the OORP program. The Housing Division is now accepting application for residents to apply for up to $40,000 in forgivable loans for home repairs and improvements through our owner-occupied rehabilitation program. This council allocated $920,000 for eligible homeowners. The loan is interest-free and over time, if you continue with the loan and remain in the home, it can be forgiven over years six through 10. So funding is on a first come, first served basis, so please look at our website and make an application. The city broke ground on our Sicum Lake Park Improvement Project. Last Thursday, the city marked the $13.8 million investment into improvements at the park with a groundbreaking ceremonies, ceremony. Work on the 44-acre park is now underway and expected to approximately take one year to complete. Spiker Park upgrades tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. The city will mark the first phase of improvements to Spiker Memorial Park with a small ceremony. Among the improvements include lighting upgrades at the ball fields and upgrades to scoreboards and the field itself. Financial support for this project comes from the County of San Bernardino and the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians. Another project underway at Spiker Park is the replacement of the East Side Skate Park. This city-funded project is in its final stages and a grand opening is expected to take place in May. The commitment to the animal shelter, last week, the Animal Services Department opened its new customer service center at the animal shelter. The new facilities included expanded customer service center, dedicated space for foster and volunteer programs, and space for the Lang Foundation staff. Earlier today, the animal shelter, Animal Services opened an additional 34 kennels at the Chandler Place Shelter. These kennels will be used to house additional dogs as well as to be used for animals needing special treatment or medical isolation. Again, thank you to the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians for helping fund the new facility. Last week, our development team led by Ken Chapa attended the annual ICSC Conference in Monterey. At the conference, candidates team met with 12 firms to discuss retail opportunities in San Bernardino. Context of the conference will help build additional discussions with site selectors in our community. ICSC is a well-known organization that promotes retail and commercial development. It is used to be known as the International Council of, Council of Shopping Centers. On March 21st, Jose and Claudia Castillo celebrated the opening of Tacos y Mariscos Pan Sa Verde at 1150 North Waterman Avenue just south of baseline. The Castillos got their start during the pandemic with a food stand and now they are excited to have their own restaurant in town. So congratulations to the entire Castillo family. And finally, in some city news here, the Chavez mural will be unveiled at Lattle Creek Park. We'll be unveiling a new mural featuring Caesar Chavez at the Lattle Creek Community Park Community Center at 11:45 a.m. on Wednesday, April 9th. And the mural was painted by local artist Christian Marcia. Public Works inspired our Monterey Elementary School students at Career Day. On March 20th, Public Works Civil Engineer Ramon Edimendez, Ryan Castillo for the Traffic Division, and Sal Guerrero from Land Development met with students to talk about them and what they do in a typical day. Thank you for the team at Monterey Elementary for putting on such a great career day to all the students and being such a great audience about learning about possible career opportunities in San Bernardino. Mayor Protem, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to you and to all our city employees for, for the work that they do day in, day out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will be moving on to the public hearing, item number 17 at this time. It is the issuance of tax-exempt bonds by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority for Arrowhead Grove Phase Four and Adopt Resolution 2025-268 approving the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed $45 million. I'm opening the public hearing at 7:09 p.m. Would the city staff please provide the presentation at this time?
Mayor Protem, I figure all our members of the city council, we're going to present you with a PowerPoint on the subject matter that is on the agenda this evening. That presentation will be given by Trina Perez. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to make one small note that the presentation was a last-minute ad. So they, the presentation is available to the public in the back and it has been made available online. So the housing staff has requested this public hearing for issuance of the $45 million taxes and bond for the financing of Arrowhead Grove Phase Four, an affordable housing project. We're also requesting approval of the resolution for issuance of the bond. The Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, also known as TEFFRA, requires a public hearing. This hearing is a form of public approval of the taxes and bonds. This allows members of the community to express their views for the proposed issuance of the tax-exempt bonds. Taxes and bonds are a common financing mechanism. It reduces the development financing cost and it will be repaid from the project's rental The bonds are to be issued by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority on behalf of the project and the city is not obligated to repay the bonds. The city's responsibility is to host the hearing as the local jurisdiction and adopt the resolution. There is no fiscal impact to the city. And this is just an update on the project information. The borrower will be Arrowhead Grove Four LP Developer National Corps, commonly known as COR. The issuer is California Statewide Communities Development Authority and the purpose is for the financing of the development of the 92-unit affordable multifamily rental housing project. This is a collaborative effort with the housing authority of the County of San Bernardino, National Corps, the nonprofit developer, the County of San Bernardino, and the city. The city shares estimated to be $4.9 million, which is, was conditionally committed in October of 2024 by the mayor and council. In June of 2025, the housing staff will return for the formal commitment of the home funds. The development will also include a community center. The north wing will feature services for health-related services. The east wing will be designed for nonprofits, offering various social services. The total complex will provide office space for the tenants and community-focused areas to serve neighboring residents. The city has already previously funded the first three phases of this development in, in partnership, again, with the organizations. The total development cost is $135.5 million with 132, 322 units developed. And just to recap, so we're conducting the TEFFRA hearing, we're adopting the resolution, asking for adoption of the resolution for the issuance of the bonds not to exceed $45 million for the development of Arrowhead Grove Phase Four. Authorize the city manager designate to take any further action for the issuance of these bonds. And I can now take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak? Does anyone wish to speak on this item?
We had one request to speak from Christian Shaughnessy, but I believe he may have left for the evening.
I don't see him be, I believe he, and he did make a comment that he wasn't going to be able to, to stay around for it. Okay. Okay, so then I am now closing the public hearing at 7:13 p.m. for deliberation and action. Do we have any discussion or comments from the council at this time? Councilmember Sanchez.
We close the hearing now so we can move to approve this. It's an excellent project. There's Phase Four that'll bring 92 much-needed units to the city of San Bernardino and then there'll be a Phase Five. And this comes at no cost to the city. The city is just conducting the hearing, the TEFFRA hearing, and so I move to approve.
Nice second.
So we have a, a motion was made by Councilmember Sanchez and seconded, seconded by, I think-
Councilmember Canas.
Uh, Councilmember Canas. Councilmembers, please utilize the voting buttons. I see it popped up already on the screen.
I apologize that the voting, it's not working right now. Go ahead and take a voice vote.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and please proceed with the, with the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for the report as well. We will be moving on to the consent calendar at this time. Mr. City Manager, are there any items being pulled at this time? No items. It's interesting. Are there any councilmembers that wish to pull any items from, from the agenda?
I'd like to pull item 18.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Pull item 18.
18? I'll come back to you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, I have, I have one to pull.
Okay, I'll come back to you as well. Councilmember Ortiz?
21.
21. Councilmember Flores? None. Councilmember Sharet?
None.
Councilmember Canas? Any pulls? Nope? Okay, thank you.
20.
And Councilmember Sanchez, 20. If I may please have a motion to-
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Sharet, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez. If we may please, Adam, are we doing digital vote or, okay?
Yes, if you see it pop up, then we can do digital voting. The motion approved unanimous.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to item number 18, pulled by Councilmember Ibarra. Please proceed.
Yes, I was reading the information and I want to get an update from city staff. I know I've been asking our former city managers for updates also. One, somebody already mentioned the line items of how this money will be utilized. And also I want to know how much have the partners that we have, how much have they paid of their portion that they agreed to do for the city? Because we're for, we're giving up money on our end upfront. And I'm, I'm reading here that the city of San Bernardino will be reimbursed by the five cities on a quarterly basis and I want to make sure that we are.
Thank you, council member. So the money is being utilized for services and supplies, which includes vet services and other supplies such as, you know, tools and equipment and stuff that's needed for staff. We have been purchasing those items and this is just a procedural action to balance those books, to add that, that funding in that the cities are being billed quarterly. I do not have the exact amounts that have been deposited into our account, but I'd be more than happy to bring that back.
Yeah, and I'd be, I'd be more comfortable voting in favor once we get those reports. If we can bring this back to the council, once we get those reports, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Just to point out, we're still purchasing all of these things, so we have to override in order to do this.
Sorry, I'm asking for the report showing how much our partner cities have paid our city. If we can have that report, that I would feel more comfortable.
But, so, just so I understand, we're not approving this today?
No, I just want to, I just want to make sure that our partners are being held accountable and that they are reporting and, and paying their portion to the city as they agreed to on a quarterly basis. We have not been provided this information and for us to be trying to do line items to help support the efforts to go to their cities, I think it, it's fair for the community members to understand how all that money's been used and how we're getting, how much we're getting.
I have Councilmember Sanchez followed by Councilmember Ortiz.
Yes, this partnership, this is in its infancy. We have not really provided services yet, so we can't be billing them for services we haven't provided yet. They will be contractually obligated to pay their, what, what, what they owe the city once those services are provided. These are the capital, these are those capital investments that we're making in order to have the capacity to be able to be a, a regional shelter, which is what the direction from this council has been for the last several months, correct?
So it's a little bit of both. They're being billed quarterly already for both the capital improvement as well as the, the actual staffing and supplies costs. So they're already being billed for those costs and through our finance department. So since we started taking in animals in July, they've been billed for those services.
And they're paying their bills? Is there any outstanding?
Again, I would have to check with, with finance. We'd have to get a report. We'd have to get a report.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council. If you recall, the agreement said based on a projection. This is the capital piece that we need, and this is what we think they need support for the operating expenditures. We came up with an agreement. We told them, based on your past history, this is what we think we can bill you for based on the intake. And so we started that July. Now that, again, that was a budget. It was a projection. Now that we're done six months, so what we did is we billed them the first quarter based on that agreement. Now that we've done six months, we know what their actuals are, and now we are going to base our next future billings based on the actual intake we get from these cities. So we did do our first quarter billing. We are ready to send out the second, and I know that as soon as we get more actual data, we are going to go ahead and maybe propose a restructure of that percentage. Now, in relation to the staff report today, unfortunately, when we came in July, it only included salaries and benefits. As Ms. Watson is saying, we still have to buy supplies to support their partnership. So we are saying we're going to need about seven hundred thousand for this year to support those partnerships, but we're also going to bill them for that. And if I'm not mistaken, between Chris and the former city manager, the cities were informed of that. So they knew that this is, this is supplies and benefits for the partnership in addition to salaries.
Councilmember Sanchez, any follow-up?
No, just move to approve.
Okay. Councilmember Ortiz?
So then, and to make sure, so out of the seven hundred thousand, between us and the existing cities, we will be reimbursed by them three hundred and twenty-five thousand of that, because we're expending fifty-four percent of it at three hundred and seventy-four thousand. So we'll be getting a little bit under fifty percent back of our money. So, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Ibarra, you pulled the item. Any follow-up?
I still would like to see how much our city has been paid by those partners, partner cities.
And we can provide that information, Mayor Protem, for sure. I would just simply like to reinforce that any direction of staff be processed through the city manager's office as well.
Mr. City Manager, can you help us look into those numbers? Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Sanchez, seconded by councilmember Sharet. If we, Madam City Clerk, if we may please take the roll, or, oh, it's digital?
I apologize. Actually, councilmember Ortiz submitted a motion, and councilmember Sanchez seconded in the system, so if you can go ahead and make your vote now.
If that's, if that's the will of the council, if that's okay, it's fine. We can proceed with that.
Councilmember Ibarra? Did you submit your vote?
No.
If you may, please cast your vote on your screen. I'm not sure if anybody still left.
Okay, motion passes. Six to one with councilmember Ibarra voting in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have item number twenty, pulled by councilmember Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, usually these come with a partner item attached, if not part of the same item, a budget action. So this is to amend the classification and salary schedule, creating this position, but this position isn't being funded through this action on this item. So I want to know if this is going to come back for us to budget, or if it's just going to come back at, when we do the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five? Sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six is when it's going to come back if someone is, if the departments are requesting to utilize that classification. So we just, we determine a need for that classification, not necessarily an action to request a position.
Yeah, and that's actually exactly why I pulled it, because I am in support of creating this position. It's just really odd, because usually with this position, there's the salary schedule adjustment to create the position, and then the budget action to fund that position so that we can actually put someone in that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not being funded right now. It's just because we established the administrative analyst classification series last year, so we have the administrative analyst one and two and the senior. So this is the principal level. It's just an expansion of that classification family.
Yeah, okay. Well, no, it's something I support. It just seemed a little odd that we didn't have it budgeted.
It should have been done last year.
As a budget action. So you're saying, just want to make sure I hear you clearly, this doesn't look like it's going to get budgeted until the next fiscal year?
Yes, any transactions will have to come back to get, to be budgeted through the budget.
Wait, that one, maybe, maybe our finance director can, because I know when we did a finance policy update, that we changed that, and some of these positions, if they're created, if the salary schedule is created, there doesn't need to be, this can be done administratively. Is that correct? Because if we have, if we're not increasing the, the number of individuals in that department and the position is created, even if it isn't budgeted, as long as it doesn't increase the total dollar amount, that can be funded administratively. Is that correct?
Councilman Sanchez, that is correct. We could administratively fund the position with other salary savings.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, and maybe it's something, I know we did this three years ago out of expediency, and maybe it's something I think either, you know, the city manager should update when there's an administratively budgeted position, or maybe have a, go back to the way we used to do it, which is where council approves these positions. But yeah, I just wanted to confirm that that, in fact, is the new policy as of twenty, I want to say twenty twenty-three, and it seems like, yeah, that's exactly it. Move to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none? There is a motion by councilmember Flores, seconded by councilmember Ortiz on the air. I'm not sure if we're doing based on, what's it, digital here or vote, voice?
Sorry, yes, we're doing the digital vote.
The digital, okay. Well, then, councilmembers, I invite you to please cast your votes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have item number twenty-one, pulled by councilmember Ortiz. Councilmember?
So I pulled this. Okay. All right, so I pulled this more to discuss, I know, I understand the voucher program, and I understand its need for immediate temporary shelter, but as I've heard the city talk in multiple meetings, this really is a Band-Aid on bullet hole approach to people being shuffled. They cleaned out the wash across street from Carousel Park, only for the people not to really have anywhere to go other than back into the wash. And I know that there are larger issues that come with these encampments, public safety, drugs, all of these things. And so I don't want it to fall on deaf ears what the community is repeating to us about a true need. And I know we're looking at the Navigation Center, permanent supportive housing, temporary shelter, but where is that interim component? And that's really what this pulling leads to, is we're expending two million plus, we're going to be adding money for people to be in rooms for twenty-eight days max, and so is that something that, that is addressed here? I mean, are we going to potentially run out of money for vouchers, or are we going to be able to just keep fueling this until the Navigation Center is built? That would be my question.
Right now, this is on top of the motel voucher program that the housing team has. PD was allocated CDBG funds, which will be coming back later in this fiscal year and looking at allocating additional community development block grant funds. This, and the tenants can stay in the motel longer than the two-week period that was mentioned earlier, as long as they're actively working with the services that we're providing. And then also with the CDBG funds, hopefully in the future, we're looking at bringing on some other nonprofit organizations to work with the tenants while they're in the motels to provide mental health services, drug services, dental care. We're looking at partnering with quite a few of the nonprofits.
Yeah, and I just want to add on, councilmember Ortiz, Dr. Ortiz, to let you know that so far the city's only expended about thirteen percent of the two point seven million. So the additional funds that are going to be used to help PD expand its services in regards to, I think, the peace team, it's not going to hinder what the city's able to do. I want to also add that we have enough funding to carry us through, through the creation. We will have two navigation centers, but if not one, both. And then finally, I want to add that council just approved, I believe March nineteenth, a rapid rehousing. We do understand that interim housing is a Band-Aid, but it does allow the city to get, who, individuals who are willing, we cannot force anybody, but if an individual is willing, then it provides that immediate shelter out of the environment, be it cold weather, hot weather, things of that nature. But we do have the funding to extend.
And Chief, is it fruitful? Is it, is it, is there anything you need to add to this?
Well, I think it's absolutely fruitful, and I think Cassandra just touched on the main component. It's about those who are willing. All of the services that are provided and the stabilization that's accomplished through the hotels allows for our service providers to get the people on the right track to permanent housing. And that would be the same scenario that would be played out even if we had a true navigation center today. It would still be up to the individual to accept the help that we're offering. So the notion that we're doing nothing by having a hotel, or the notion that we're only shuffling people around by having hotel vouchers is completely false and misguided because it's the exact same process. It's the initial stabilization, it's the offer for additional services to get people on the path that they ultimately have to choose themselves. So I think it's very fruitful.
Any other, any follows? Councilmember Sanchez, followed by councilmember Ibarra.
Yes, so for several years, me and many of my colleagues up here have made it a top priority and have directed staff accordingly to find permanent solutions, and that has manifested itself in the manner of investing tens of millions of dollars in the Navigation Center. We have also dedicated, we've also dedicated over a million dollars to invest in purchase of a property for permanent supportive housing. These are, these programs that we're approving today are to get that person off the street, get them off that hard concrete, the cold weather, the extreme hot weather. That is to get them help right away. But we are working in parallel lanes to build this Navigation Center, to build this permanent supportive housing. So any narrative out there that we're just putting a Band-Aid on something like this is completely misleading. We are working hard to find a sustainable and effective solution to getting people back on the right track and keeping them there without constantly needing help from outside agencies. So I move to approve this. This is a good, this is a good program to get those people off those cold streets in the winter and the hot summers.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes, and just to clarify to the community, we're not just doing rapid rehousing for a week or two weeks on our unhoused. This is longer than two weeks, and it's on a case-by-case basis, with the longest time allowed, six months, I believe. That's what our staff is agreeing to help individuals become stabilized. This is not just a quick fix, that's one week or two weeks worth. It can go longer, as long as they need the housing and they're getting the services and they're getting stabilized, we are trying to help them get their life back in order or get them into permanent housing. So that is the goal of the city. We're not doing this as a short-term fix.
Councilmember Ortiz, you pulled the item. Would you like to close?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it, and I think this is what's important, is it does feel like a shuffle. It does, because there is so much going on. And to the point is, and I kind of want to piggyback a little bit on what councilmember Figueroa said the other day on a livestream, is that it's the will of the people to take the help, and there is no quick fix. And so wanting the community wanting the parks clean took people out of the parks. People wanting the flood contrannals filled or cleaned takes people out of the flood, and then those people have to want to go somewhere. And the, it is a, it is a big problem of which we've declared a state of emergency two and a half years ago. And so the Navigation Center is coming, making sure that what we're doing is fruitful. The hotel vouchers, as, you know, I've set up sat in meetings, it's that revolving door in making sure that, that we're addressing it. But nonetheless, we are addressing it, and so your concerns are being heard and your questions are being answered. So thank you.
Thank you. I have, the motion's been made, has been made by councilmember Sanchez and seconded by councilmember Ortiz. Councilmembers, I invite you to please cast your votes. And Madam City Clerk, if you could read the.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now be moving on to the discussion item here. Okay, so we have the City of San Bernardino Boards, Commissions, and Citizen Advisory Committees updating the regular meeting dates, times, and locations of, could, Mr. City Manager, if we could please have the staff's presentation?
I'll just be brief, Mayor Protem. So item before you is a discussion on the meeting times of our various boards and commissions. This item was brought back in December. You have before you a chart of the current times at which the boards and commissions meet. We do not recommend any changes to the library board or water board. There are subsets of the council and meet at their respective times. And the personnel commission is largely held behind closed doors, sometimes up to six to eight hours, so we don't recommend any changes to that commission time. So I'll turn it back over to council to decide what you guys are interested in doing or not. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any members of the council wishing to discuss this item or have any comments? Well, I'll just go down the line and work my way this way. Councilmember Ibarra, I'll just go down the line here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I remember being a commissioner, and when I was a commissioner, the commissioners themselves voted amongst themselves what time they would best fit their schedule to meet at those meetings. I recently had a commissioner being kicked out of a commission that doesn't even meet because of, he wanted to meet at a different time, and he was by himself. But back when I was a commissioner, commissioners, we all amongst each other, we voted for the time that best worked for all of us. I'm not sure if this will be conducive for our staff to have afternoon meetings, but I'll leave it to your discretion, Mr. City Manager. On my end, I would prefer the own commissioners amongst themselves vote for the time they want to meet.
Thank you. Councilmember Canas?
Yes, and I echo similar sentiments, and I do see the intended purpose of this. I myself have served on numerous city commissions as well as county. I'm a working mama, so I totally get it. We are a working-class community and wanting to accommodate our constituents. I do have some concerns, though, with a couple of the commissions. One, the Animal Commission, it currently meets at four o'clock, and I understand that they do meet in the library facilities. At six PM, there is no longer security available. In addition to that commission, I think the Measure S Committee has a similar challenge in the two oh one building. At six o'clock, the building does close and no longer has security. Specifically with the Animal Commission, I think there's been a little bit of controversy with that commission specifically and safety concerns. For my commissioner, she has verbally expressed to me her sentiments and grave concerns regarding safety. We've had individuals show up to those meetings with weapons. We've had individuals that had to be removed. So security is desperately needed for that particular commission, and I probably would assume for the other commissions as well. So with that does come a fiscal impact. I know that this is just a discussion item, so that fiscal impact hasn't been quantified yet. I do have to highlight our last meeting. Our finance director did an excellent presentation, but the reality is, we are not a city that is flush with cash. We are a city there, our revenues are barely meeting our expenditures, and I will continue to harp on that because we do have to be very fiscally prudent. I think this is a great, and again, well-intended item, but in totality and weighing our priorities and the priorities that really mirror our constituents, I don't believe this is at the top of the priority list. And again, the actual fiscal impact hasn't been quantified. It might possibly be a drop in the bucket, but the reality is, every drop does matter in the city of San Bernardino, so I want us to weigh that quite heavily, and that's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes, I move to continue the item.
Okay, Councilmember Ortiz.
I, I do like the idea of the consensus of the commissions or the boards seeing a, a time that works for them. I, I have trouble when people, especially when the community's involved, in trying to assess a cost versus their participation. I think it, it is a big deal that people give their time to our community, that their voices are so important to what we do. As Junior gets up here and says, you know, like, this is, this is a community thing, and making sure that people can attend these meetings, that's the purpose of them. And it is hard for working people to get off at four o'clock, and if it is an extra 20 bucks for a security guard, then that, to me, is worth the investment to the community. If, if the Planning Commission meets in the same building, if it's moving it from the basement up to the, to the top floor for the Measure S versus the Planning Commission, I support that, because when I've left Planning Commission meetings, there's been people up at the top floor. If we want to look at the animal control, I do, I do believe that security is a big issue regardless of the time, given the, the climate of which you're dealing in. So, I think we need to look at that investment regardless of, at four o'clock or at seven o'clock. And so, if, instead of continuing, I'd like the City Manager, if possible, council, to take our, to take a look at our, what we're asking and, and bring back what, what the additional cost of a security guard would be for another hour, or how, making sure that everybody's safe. I, it's, we've asked people to, to give their time. If we can do that, it'd be great.
Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thinking, thinking about this, it's, I, I do want the community involvement, and I think it's very important, because I picture myself last year while, while I was transitioning, like, employment, but while working, sometimes making these meetings is a little difficult for me, but I also think that we need to be, as leaders, like a ring body, we need to be kind, like, fiscally responsible. So, I, I would like to see what the options are for paying staff to stay a little bit over or the, the cost of security guard, or maybe looking at to what commissions are more important priority on the list to, for us to be able to shift those, like, timeframes or extend those timeframes.
Councilmember Charette.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to know what the intention of my colleague who wants to continue this is. I mean, continue to, for what purpose and to a specific time and, and date or, or what? Because I can probably second that, but I, I've got some comments after that.
Yeah, no, I, I think, uh, I think, uh...
I'll make sure to, I'll make sure to go through all the councilmembers.
Well, I'd like to ask his intention for continuation. If, 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 if that makes sense, why are we continuing? Why aren't we just voting on it tonight?
Sure, if you yield your time so that Councilmember Sanchez can answer that question.
My concern is, this is an item that hasn't been looked at for six years, and I think there's a reason for that. I think we allowed the commissions to kind of establish their own dates and times and, and locations. I think with our oversight or approval, this was last looked at in 2018, when we ratified whatever that resolution was at that time, and it allowed them to determine their own schedules pretty much. And then it was, we dealt with it again in 2019, only because we added a new commission. The, I believe that was historical, I can't think of the name of the commission right now, but the, the, what is it?
Preservation.
Preservation, historical, whatever. And so, we added that, and we had to include them in, in the group with, with all the rest of the commissions. And for now, six years, going on six years, I'm not aware of any major concerns or problems that I've heard from either staff or commission members. I think it's always difficult to get quorums there, because these are volunteer positions, and people have their daily lives, and so, I think commissions sometimes have a problem getting a quorum, but I don't know that it has to do with the date and the time so much. So, I don't see a real need to do much changing if we want to bring it back with some sort of a full report and, and have all the commissioners or commissions talk. Making it after hours also impacts our staff. You know, they, they stay late for these meetings, and so, I think we need to consider staff as well. So, I'm not necessarily in favor of, of changing anything at this time, so, I, I don't, this is, is there a, a motion needed to do something? What, and what is that? This is just for discussion.
The, if, if you wanted the status quo, no action would be needed.
Just none of it?
The only action would be to continue the item or to adopt the resolution to change the meeting dates or times. Status quo is no action.
So, we just discuss it like we have and then just say, "Thank you very much," and we don't do anything?
That's right. No action needed for status quo.
That would be, that would be my, my support.
Thank you, councilmembers. I, I too, much like many of you, served on various commissions and boards and committees throughout many years, and, and at that time, of course, this was under the previous charter, and so, we were able to sort of, you know, come up with our own schedule or times or, you know, things like that. And so, I, I presume that it's changed since then and that the council has to, you know, adopt a time and schedule and, and that, so, or unless I'm incorrect in that. I, I would certainly, I mean, I, I serve on, on the IVDA, and with the IVDA, we set our own, our times and, and things like that. So, I, I would certainly like to receive some input, some feedback on the commissioners. I mean, if these times work for them as well, you know, because one-size-fits-all situation doesn't work here either. And so, it's, it should be specific to each one as well, but I think we have plenty of follow-ups here. I'm just chairing right now, so I'll let you guys manage that. I'll go down the, the list again. Councilmember Ibarra, any follow-ups?
No, just my regular comment. As a former commissioner, it, it was us as a group, collaborative group. I mean, as is, it's hard for people to become, sign up to be a commissioner because they're volunteering their time, and it's when they're available, and I, I think it'd be prudent for us to allow them to vote amongst themselves with staff to see what works for them, not us imposing a time for all commissions of when they can meet. And we were talking about how we're limited on spacing right now throughout the whole city and security. There's a lot of factors to look into, and this is where I would like our City Manager, you know, get together with your staff, and then when they meet with the commissioners, they can all discuss amongst themselves.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Canas.
I think we're on the same wavelength today. I was just going to do the, recommend the same. I think rather than having a blanket timeframe for all commissions that really may not be feasible, especially again, considering the fiscal impact, if it's not necessary, why would we change the times? I really think that we need to direct this back to the commissions and the appropriate directors of those commissions to see if there really is a need to change the time and handle it by a commission-by-commission basis. I think that's most appropriate.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sanchez.
That's a motion, that's a motion.
That is a motion.
Second. No. Second.
For the, sorry.
Please, proceed, go, go repeat the, the motion, please.
For City Manager to go back with his staff and go commission-by-commission to determine the feasibility of changing the commission times and make a recommendation based off that assessment.
Councilmember Sanchez, and that was your second?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Ortiz, any follow-up?
Yeah, no, I, I like that, especially given that the Measure S Committee just got canceled because they didn't have quorum. The Arts and Historical Society was just able to meet for one of the first times in over a year, because they were able to finally get someone to come in at four o'clock. The Park and Rec Commission has been, not been able to establish quorum for, what, Joe, almost two years? And so, about a year. The Measure, Measure S is extremely important, as we've written that in, so I, I really think that we need to do, we need to do our due diligence in making sure there was a reason why we created these. And so, even if it's revisited wherever, like, every two years, as new commissioners are appointed in bulk by elections, I, I'd like to see that too. So, I really do, if, if what works best for the body to create quorum, because the voice of the community is absolutely vital to how we are supposed to do our jobs. If we can't hear you, then you're not being represented, and so, I'd, I, I want to make sure that's, that's where this comes from, and I really appreciate my colleagues for being at this point in December and, and continuing this, to give us back this information. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Flores, any follow-ups?
No, no, just want to thank my colleagues. I think that we all re, we're all, as Councilmember Canas said, we're all on the same wavelength. It's, it's important to let the commissioners themselves decide what best works for them, but just add it on, like, if they were to head, to extend the times, maybe like the, the financial cost of what it, what it would impact us to have those, to have, to continue those meetings at a later time.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Charette, any...
Nothing more, other than I'll, I will be supporting the motion as it stands right now.
Okay. All right, councilmembers, last call. Last call, any last comments?
Just last, will you, City Manager, look into the additional costs of, or is there already an armed guard or is it just regular guards? Because someone's, Kim said a lot about...
They're, they're regular security here, and there are no armed guards here.
So, if there's potential of actual physical threat, with someone bringing a weapon, can we look at the cost of an armed person being in the room?
We could. I think, based on the direction I heard, let's say, Animal Board wants to meet at six o'clock, we would come back with a resolution changing that time to 6:00 PM, also with the fiscal impact of that as well, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I had similar issues with my commissioner. I, in fact, stepped down because of concerns and issues with that commission as well, and so, I think that one really does need, deserve to have a in-depth look as well. Okay, councilmember, so it looks like we do have a motion made by Councilmember Canas, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez. I invite you to please cast your votes on your screen.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, at this time, I, I guess I would need some advice on, do I close the open session, because we still have some pending business to take care of in close, or how do I proceed here?
Just adjourn from open session back to closed session. We'll need to come back out again so I can report out from the last item that you're going to take up in closed session.
Okay. Before I do that, I, I did forget that we still need to do the updates from, by councilmembers for, who attended any conferences or meetings. Councilmember Ibarra, do you have any announcements or updates to provide? My apologies, I skipped over this part.
Yes, I, today we went to the Central Valley Regional Steering Committee, me and Councilmember-Elect Dr. Treasurer Ortiz, and, you know, we gave our city the update of what it is that we're doing regarding the navigation center, and we also provided some numbers of the people that we have been helping off the streets. So, that's always good for the community to find out. The thirteen percent of the money that we have allocated for hotel vouchers is minimal to, you know, what we can do impact, and once again, it's just who wants to help. If they want to be off the streets, we'll help them, and we have the money available for them. So, that's, that's one of the meetings that I've, I've attended to recently, and I think it's very important. We, we even had Congressman Aguilar's representative, Kurt Lewis, present to us and telling us that if there's any grants, any funding needed by the federal government, to let them know. Unfortunately, right now, the federal government is, is kind of like a, a yes or no on what they're going to be funding as far as programs, so if there's any nonprofits out there that have been recently cut on funding or programs that we offer to the community that have been cut because there's no federal funding for them, to let them know, that way they can reinstate those funds and make them available to the community. Good meetings.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Canas.
I just want to thank all the community that came out on March 27th. We had a phenomenal turnout, and a huge thank you to our fire and PD. I have to say, I'm still getting congrats and kudos off of the presentations that they did. I, as a councilperson, as a longtime city resident of the City of San Bernardino, I walked away feeling so inspired and reinvigorated and dedicated and passionate about being Team San Bernardino once again. Our staff is doing some amazing things. I know both Chief Yeager and Chief Goodman unfortunately are no longer here, but a huge congrats and thanks to them. What we are doing in PD, as they said, was real Jason Bourne stuff, so we have some real spectacular things going on in our PD department, and I just want to give a huge thank you. And again, thank you to the community, because getting people out to a community meeting is not always easy, so to have the turnout that we did was really, really appreciated. So, thank you, and I'm, I'll, I'll be posting for my next meeting soon. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Sanchez.
I'm sorry, and just thank you to Mayor Protem for supporting that meeting. Thank you.
It was a pleasure being there and interacting with the public as well. Thank you.
I attended a groundbreaking for the cleanup or the, the remodel, the, the revamp of Secum Lake, the second-largest park in the City of San Bernardino. Ernesto Salinas coordinated that event, put it together, and it was an exceptional event, and I want to thank him here in front of everyone. He is the first one who believed in that park when it was at its lowest nearly five years ago. And he came to me with some pretty bold ideas, and I said, "Are you sure, Ernesto?" He said, "There's no budget item for this, but I have some extra material and some extra hours, extra, you know, overtime hours I can use with my staff." And so, he started working on that park nearly five years ago, and he convinced me, and, and we went out there, we took a look at it. I, you know, I opened my big mouth, and that got the Sun newspaper to come out, write an article that inspired people to contribute, including the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians that contributed a million dollars to that cleanup. And so, that was, that was incredible. That was incredible, and I can't wait for that park to open in a little less than a year. With that, we have another park unveiling of the Cesar Chavez mural at Lidle Creek Park. That is another park where San Manuel contributed a million dollars to that park, and I think they're going to spend it at the community center. That park under, under Juan Figueroa has really flourished. They have a Futsal, is that what it's called? Futsal Court, Futsal Field that's going in. That million dollars is going to go into the community center, this beautiful mural that's going up on the side of the, of the broad wall, I guess the south-facing wall of that community center. That park is really, is really a gem in that particular part of town. And so, Juan, good job on that, and I want to say outstanding job as, as chair of this meeting. You've done...
It's not as easy as it looks.
You've done...
It's not.
Well, you made it look easy. This has got to be the smoothest meeting we've had. I'm not going to get anything about closed session, but closed session was great. I mean, everything, nobody was arguing, nobody was interrupting each other out here. Great. You, you're a, a natural leader, and, and you can make friends out of some of the worst people, so, it's some of the meanest people, and so, outstanding, outstanding, Mayor Protem Figueroa, thanks for doing a good job today.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words, sir. Councilmember Ortiz.
So, I attended the Cesar Chavez breakfast with the City Manager and the team chief was there, Councilman Flores, Mayor Tran, a great event, really, really important, the messaging, oh, I'm sorry, Kim Canas, Councilwoman Canas was there, and, and just the messaging this year was amazing, especially just the impact of how vital education is, especially in the Hispanic community. And please don't let anybody, as in tell you as a professor, ever tell you that a college degree is not worth it, because the one thing no one can take away from you is the knowledge inside of your head. So, very, very important, very inspiring. I also attended with Councilmember Mario Flores, the Auntie T, hosted by Che Wright. It was a very wonderful experience for the community, and then from there, we hustled over to the senior center on Fifth Street for their Derby Day. That was legit. The hats were amazing, twenty-one years, fifteen years of volunteership. We just have amazing, amazing people, the, the true bedrock and foundation of our seniors in our community, and so, that was super awesome and amazing to be a part of. And then also, the groundbreaking for Secum Lake is amazing. I do appreciate everything... I do appreciate everything that Ernesto does. I would be remiss not to also make sure that we note the amazing work that Lyddie Gutfeld did as our Park and Rec Director and the level of investment. The playgrounds are going to be amazing. The, just the overall architecture is going to be fabulous and nice. So I appreciate Ernesto and Public Works Team in being able to carry that on. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, Ernesto's really another rock star in the city as well. Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. March 26, I was able to take a tour of the Garner Holt Imagination facility over by, like, Redlands area. And, man, it's incredible seeing the number-one distributor for animatronics here in San Bernardino County, being our neighbors. And then, I say, later that day, went to the Delman Heights Neighborhood Association Council. They have their food pantry at True Light Community Fellowship. So if you or anyone you know needs food, please go there there on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month. March 27, attended the groundbreaking of Second Lake Park for the rehabilitation. And I'm very excited just to see what's going to come. And it's going to be an incredible park and an incredible development. This Saturday, fast-forwarding, this Saturday morning, went to the Community Climate Action Day over by Viva La Bova where they had trees to plant all around some city parks here in San Bernardino. So a shout-out to them for all those volunteers. I think it was like 30-plus volunteers that came out. From there, rushed over to the Cesar Chavez Memorial Breakfast over at Council City San Bernardino. Great to see the city team out there representing. From there, went to the Auntie Brunch, as well with Councilmember Ortiz. Incredible to see all the aunties that help and serve our community, and they're a huge corner, pivot, foundation for us. And then from there, went to the Kentucky Derby Senior Recognition. And wow, just seeing all those years that we have, like, volunteers. I was like five when some of them were the volunteers. I'm going to give my age. And then yesterday, oh, no, two days ago, attended the I Love San Bernardino radio show with Mayor Protem Figueroa with Robert Porter, and it was incredible, fruitful dialogue. And that's it.
It was fun, certainly. Councilmember Sherritt.
Thank you. Yes, I also joined my colleague, Mr. Flores, and Councilmember Sanchez, and our mayor, Mayor Tran, to tour the Garner Holt Productions facility and see and get a glimpse of what they plan to do right here and what they're doing actually with education across the country. My colleague says that they're a great partner, which is true, and that they're large and that they're the number one. But that's number one in the world. I had no idea, as long as I've known Garner Holt, I had never been through its facility, and it is impressive. It is really, really impressive what they do and what they do throughout the world, in fact. It was funny, that day we were there, the place was almost empty. There were very, very few employees. They're number one in the world, and I would have thought, you know, maybe they've got 1,000 employees. Well, they've only got about, I think, 70 or 80 employees, but they were all gone. They were in Japan, I think, setting up something. And so they build it here and do it here, and then they fly it, and then they have to go install it at a restaurant or amusement park or whatever. But very impressive, and they're a great partner and probably somebody that we need to get closer to. So it was, they served us lunch, and it was a great, a great, great opportunity. We were fortunate enough to have Garner Holt actually himself gave us our tour. And he was, and then Theodore and I got to sit and have lunch with him and chat with him for a while. So, you know, born and raised right here in San Bernardino, started in a garage 47 years ago, and now is up to about 200,000 square feet and the world leader in animatronics. So amazing, and there's more to come from them, I'm sure. Also, like everybody else, I attended, not everybody, but I attended the groundbreaking at Second Lake. And that's, hopefully, we can get that done in a year and get that reopened and spend $13 or $14 million on that park. It's well-deserved, and it's going to be great for our community. So I've always believed that that ought to be called Central Park. And it's the biggest, nicest, well, maybe not the nicest, I think Wildwood's the nicest. But it won't be anymore after Second Lake gets their $14 million infusion. So I'm looking forward to seeing that done in about a year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Ortiz with a follow-up.
My apologies. I just wanted to make sure I gave a shout-out because we celebrated Aquinas. So the CIF has named Darryl Pedden, the head coach of Aquinas High School, as the Coach of the Year. And the Player of the Year is Malachi Jones from Aquinas. It's a big deal. These are born and raised on the west side of San Bernardino. And just couldn't be prouder of him. So, big shout-out.
Congratulations to them. Thank you. Some of the announcements that I wanted to make have already been made, so I won't go into depth in repeating some of them. But definitely the Lidle Creek Park there. Ernesto, I thank you so much for the work that you do. You certainly are a rock star in this city as well. And so I look forward to the unveiling of the mural there and to the great partnership. It has been such a great partnership with San Manuel with all that they have done for our city, but specifically for Lidle Creek Park and the community center. There's a lot of great things that are going to be taking place at that park as well. So I'll be attending that this next week. And in about two weeks, we also have, get your umbrellas ready because we have the National Orange Show will be starting in about two weeks, April 16 through the 20. And so that'll be loads of fun as well. And just to close out, if this meeting was seamless tonight, I won't take full credit for it, but I will share the credit with my colleagues for your professionalism, for your leadership. Thank you so much. It certainly really was a great meeting. Thank you for your professionalism, your leadership to the staff as well for putting the agenda together and having all the information for being responsive so that if we do have information or questions prior to the meeting, you're very available through email, and you get the information back to us immediately. So thank you, thank you, sir, to you and to all the city employees that put all this together because it's not, it's not an easy thing to do. So I will go ahead and adjourn the open session, but we will be moving over to closed session. So I will close the open session. The next joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council and the mayor and city council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency and the mayor and city council acting as the San Bernardino City Housing Authority and mayor and city council of the city of San Bernardino acting as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority will adjourn to the regular meeting to be held on April 16, 2025 at the Feldheim Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California, 92401. Closed session will begin at 3:30 PM, and open session will begin at 5:00 PM. However, we will be reconvening in closed session, and we will be coming... ...no, acting as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority will adjourn to the regular meeting to be held on April 16, 2025 at the Feldheim Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California, 92401. Closed session will begin at 3:30 PM, and open session will begin at 5:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.